Yeah.
I ain't here to adjudicate anything, I'm just here to bring awareness that my son is dead. And the way it's been handled. I'm just here. Bringing to the scope of what I found, you know, anybody else. I don't think it's a any problem that we all parents here. If we are looking for answers if one of our children dies or gets killed or murdered. I think it's important for any parent to be able to go out and look for answers herself. I wouldn't blame any parent for doing that. And that's what I've done. And in the few months that my son passed. I'm sorry. In a few months of my son's past. I got was telling Mr. Dean, this is the last place I'd rather be. Last year this time me and my son was dragging deer out of woods. And that's where I'd like to be now. No more trying to do this, why get the most. The longer I look into this, the worse it's got. And I, I that's, that's an understatement. I mean, our county's in bad shape. I mean, and I have all the confidence in the world in the sheriff when we started. Everything I had, I inherited directly to him because the investigators weren't doing very well. And I brought that up to him. I said, I done told these investigators four or five times, and it's been five, six, seven, eight days, then a weekend, and then a new week. I said, Joel, I bring this to them and they ain't running with it, you know, and times as, you know, I look at it this way. Whoever's handling the case to begin with, if they ain't finding nothing, and they ain't doing nothing. That's gonna come back, the, the end product is on me. Somebody gets away with something, or somebody swept on the rug, or something. But it, it's so important, I ain't gotta tell y'all how important it is to get on the job and get it done. And when I come across, when I come across stuff, I'm a cop. And when I come across a bag sitting on the side of the road, and I hate to beat this to death, because I done told everybody out there, I said, look, I'm a cop. And there's a blood stain here, it's supposed to be my son's blood in the road, and thirty foot away, there's a bag. My son didn't live. I probably, my, my son was raised right, I'm telling you good. And I believe every, you take the worst men's heads out here, they got a soul, they just as important as anybody in this room. And I ain't demeaning nobody. But my son was trying to help somebody like that, and that's what got him in this shape. Six months is all it took for my twenty-nine-year-old to be in prison, six months is all it took, and he was trying to help this girl. And then we got a big problem in Goodsonville if you wanna call it that. And I ain't got no problem, I, I love, I got people of our love, and their last name's Goodson. I get along with a lot of different people. But getting back to the point, when I come across something, like I said, I'm just a cop. But I got common sense, and all y'all can agree, when you come across something, and, and you're just using your common sense, that, that's the best way to approach it nine times out of ten. And when I find that bag, I, I told my son, look, this is God's footstool, we don't throw trash down. And, and till the day he died, he didn't, he tied it up and put it in his backseat. And when I found that bag out there, it was busted up on the side from the beginning of so long. I took a picture of it, reached down, first thing I pulled out was a check still with my son's name on it. Now, I didn't know what to do. I, I was thinking to myself, they didn't find this? And it, it sunk my heart in one way, and it, I just buried my son. Not even a month and a half before. I mean, and here I am finding a bag, and, and I could see the stain in the road from where I'm standing. And it goes beyond me, that's just, that's just, that's just a, that's just something I can bring up to let you see where I'm coming from. And, and this right here is a text we got from his sister. Basically, it's that she jumped on him and effed him up.
Can you read it?
Yeah, I can read it. Hey, while you call, would've called back, my speaker messed up on my phone. Okay. Because I would like to tell you about yesterday, what happened. For one, for one, I beat his ass, and for two, Samantha ran over him and killed him. Who? Scotty Silver. Why? Pretty much a fish right there. He was trying to hit Shanna over, hit Shanna and ever was drunk, whatever she meant to say there. What was it doing for that to happen? Okay, yeah. Did y'all call the cops? Yes. Did y'all call the cops? Yes, same thing. Lower, yeah. I ain't, I ain't what I expected to hear. Expected to you tell me. What did you expect? That's when I got in a fight, blood all over me, beat the F out of him of the dude, lower girl. And the most damning statement, oh, L O L. Yeah, we just buried our son, and we got that, and we we can give them one source, we got two sources, and that same day we got it, we sent it straight to sheriff, and still no rest. And I can understand, like I said, I'm a cop. I ain't no no, I ain't no judge, I, I, there's a lot of stuff I don't know. But I, I got common sense, and I'm not stupid. And while I spoke to Shannon again, I said, if she wanna speak to me again, because I told her I wasn't stupid, I said, if you wanna talk to me, we'll meet at Trenton store with a witness, and I said, I'll talk to you. I said, you know, sit here and talk to me like I'm stupid, talk to me like I got sense, because I know if you lying. And I talked to her for twenty-seven minutes. And she, she tried to regurgitate what I called, the slam lie over there. I said, look, I ain't got time for that, I, I, I know it's a lie. Anybody been around that you, you know, you, you seen stuff ran over, you know stuff ran over. One back door, I ain't here, like I said, I ain't here to adjudicate, I'm just looking at my point of view and common sense. One back door on a pickup truck ain't gonna do the damage that I seen my son lay there, or the damages on him, they know what? They know what. And like I told her, won't nobody ever, ever be able to convince me otherwise. You know, the boy could've run and jumped under the door and wouldn't got that much damage. And this, this wasn't no duty, this was a single ax pickup truck. And I mean, it, 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 when people keep throwing this stuff up at me, and I'm just bringing to everybody's awareness, you know, I'm gonna speak for anybody who listen to me, y'all, I appreciate y'all listening, I really do. I'm just bringing this up, because I, I cannot, I will not rest until I get justice for my son. And if I'm then gone, and the justice still hadn't come, my wife will continue, and his sister will continue. His sister just got back from killing. They eighteen months apart, and she got to spend three weeks with her brother that she ain't seen in four years. And then he got, but like I said, I'm trying not to get much, I'm just trying to base the facts here, let y'all know that stuff ain't going completely like we would want it to, I mean, it, 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 and I ain't any scratch the surface.
The only one that's been arrested in this scenario is Mr. Scotty himself for being in the road and taking pictures of the stains and collecting evidence that was missed. There is a pattern here in Smith County of murders that immediately, we have Sheriff Joel Houston saying no foul play of Rashim Carter. Clearly, there was foul play, and then recanting later. So here we have yet another instance of what is clearly murder, when you have a confession, and now it's ruled as an accident, and then you had his son's body embalmed before it could be, have an autopsy performed when they wanted to switch it.
The first red flag we seen was, they denied it's an autopsy. Now, I could've went out and borrowed money and looked like a hypocrite, only reason I didn't is because my church is helping me pay for the funeral already, I wasn't expecting to bury my son, I'm not a rich person. My, my treasure was that boy, and my daughter, and my grandkids, that's all I care about. Money don't affect me, not one bit. If God took every dime I ever get away from me today, that wouldn't bother me, and I'm telling you, God is on his truth. That's the way I feel about money, I, it don't bother me. And it I'm just being totally honest with you, my treasures and kids, and my grandkids, and like I told people the other day, I said, what God gives you, can't nobody replace it. I mean, I ain't looking for it to be replaced, I just want, I just wanna know my son is resting in peace. I wanna know what happened the last hour of his life. I know, I sat there and laid in bed, and I know how rough it was. If he hurt like it's unimaginable what he had to go through, you know. I expect anybody, you know, anybody, any father here would do the same, any mother would do the same. And with that off, I appreciate it, y'all giving us the force of strength.
Did you say you requested an autopsy?
Yes, sir, I did. I requested it not from Scott County, but Scott County and Smith County, and they pretty much told me if I wanted an autopsy, I would've had to pay for it myself, and I didn't have that money. And at that moment, she told me about it, she said, well, sometimes an autopsy won't reveal much more anyway. And I was saying in my mind, I was asking myself, should I, should I, should I? I got this whole community of Popeville helping me. Our church put thirty-five hundred dollars on the funeral itself, you know. And between my, my parents helping, and them helping, and what we fundraised, we, we was able to bury. But I, I couldn't think, but what would people think if I go out borrowing money to have an autopsy done, and they donate money, you know? And I appreciate every dime, I mean, there's people that donated money that didn't have much money as I had. I mean, either will, just goodness of the heart, I mean, and some of them were kind of good, good people. You know, I ain't got no problem against no one person at all. This is, this is down there. And the girls, Stiddy's, I already told her, I said, I forgive you, I forgive you. I'll, I'll be, I forgive, I said, I'm gonna see you in heaven, and I do. I, that's the kind of person I am, and I said, you know what kind of person I am, you lived in the house with me. You know what kind of boy I raised. And I said, you know, you know he was trying to help you, and what'd you do? You got him on, you got him on meth, you said? And she killed him, she just basically got him on meth and killed himself, and he he just left a thirteen-year-old marriage, thirteen years. And he was lonely, and he went with the first girl that would have something to do with him, and they killed him.
So, so being that you guys are the funding source for the county, what is, what is within your sphere of control in a scenario like this, where in the jurisdiction there's a pattern of covering up murders? What, what do you guys suggest? You know, what, what do we do from here?
I'm deferring your requests to the attorney.
Well, the county board supervisors, it's not law enforcement, the people of Smith County have an elected sheriff. And the sheriff's department, along with the district attorney's office, will handle any and all investigations that come up regarding the tragic losses of your son. I'm not privy to what the status of that is.
Well, it's supposed to be going to the grand jury, according to Joel.
That would be the normal progression.
Yeah, and
But a false narrative is being presented to the grand jury in this scenario at this point.
It's just, you know, I told Joel beginning with, and if he's still here, he, yeah, uh, confirm, I said, yeah. I told him, I ain't looking for no special privilege. I just want him to do what he would do to his son, and that's all I ask anybody to do. And but we got, we, we definitely got a problem. And I, I ain't stating everything here, I ain't, I ain't trying to convince anybody here, I'm just letting you know that what I see. And I, I could bring, I could bring out, like that bag, I picked that bag up and brought it. If I called the sheriff's department south there and stuff like that, do you think they would've came out there and picked that bag up?
Questions, for me to better understand, you know, kind of the situation, you keep referring to the bag, was that after, you found the bag after your son?
Steady.
Okay.
I mean, I got, I got a picture that my cousin sent me, that she went down there the day of and took a picture, it's you know, still, you can tell, just the blood, big blood spatter, body bigger round as a woman man made it a little bigger. She took a close-up, and then she stepped back and took it. And then, but when she took, it's got background behind it, you can still see that bag laying beside the road before I picked it up. Now, I, I know it, because I picked the bag up, and that picture said a lot to me, because I walked up and down, back and forth, back and forth, I walked the woods around there. I walked everything, I laid in bed at night trying to think what I'm gonna do next. Hey, you, you'll do a lot when it comes to your child, I ain't gotta tell y'all that, we would go, you'd have to go to work every day to support them, until they old enough to support themselves. I, I lay in bed, think about, I look at the pictures, it's more of a picture. All this was brought up to us by the mortician, she used to be a cop, she said, the entries don't line up on what they saying. She said, I hate, I hate to say this, but do you want me to take the makeup off where you can take some pictures of the body? I said, of course, if, if you think anything's wrong, of course. And I got two pictures out, and I couldn't take them all, she had the paper, but I would, I'm not a speaker, I, I, only reason I'm here is because of my child. And like I said, I, I don't expect anybody to show me any kind of privilege. I don't want privilege, I just want, I want, I want justice for my child, that's all I want. And I don't see it happening, I, I, I don't see it happening under this sheriff's department, I'll put it that way. And I ain't here to adjudicate anything, I ain't, that's for somebody else to do, I'm just telling you, what I see, and I can't tell, just like the other day at the park, I couldn't tell everybody what I found there, but I just can't do it. I can't bring all that out of nowhere. Now, for me being arrested, there wasn't no sense in it, there wasn't no sense in it at all. I went, got out of the road, took three pictures, took three pictures from inside, I wouldn't even get out. But if y'all ever took a picture from inside a vehicle at night, you know, it just don't work, the flash reflects back off the windshield, all you get is bugs. And I still got them pictures too, and I took the pictures. One was I arrested from down there taking pictures. Now, it states in the paper that I was down there twice. I have not went back down there, I went down once, and I took them pictures, and I haven't been back. Now, after taking the pictures, Mr. Henry Glade says something to me at the La Prairie windshield shop. And same thing he's been saying all over Popeville. Every time anything come up, or anybody asked him, oh, them girls are innocent, that was an accident. Now, I, I caught him up, and I said, you supposed to be impartial. He said, well, that's what the medical examiner said. I said, it don't matter. I said, they might put accident down there, but it's still under investigation, you're supposed to be impartial. Well, he, he pretty much let me know, and I didn't know what I was talking about. And then after I got out of jail, I seen him again up there. Walked in. And where's that witness you talking about, you heard anything else from him? I said, no, I've been in jail, I can't do nothing in jail. And he laughed, he laughed at me. And I told him I didn't think it was funny, and I, I don't, you know. Uh, did it bother me? You know, I can handle a lot of jails. Do I want to? No. Do I think it was? It, it, it was just, it's like a slap in the face, I mean, can you imagine? You, you just buried your son, and of course, Joel's, he told my wife, he didn't have no part of that. Well, like I said, I ain't here to adjudicate anything, but, you know, if you the sheriff, you sheriff, if you ain't, you ain't. You know, and he was elected sheriff and I know good and well, if I was a sheriff, and I had a family that just lost a child, I wouldn't have him in my jail. Especially if I, I was there, I was there Thursday and Friday of that week, trying to speak with him about this witness. And he, they told me he's looking for a child Thursday, I said, okay, and Friday, he ain't in, we don't know when he's gonna be in. I said, okay. What weekend rolled by, before I could speak with him again, I was in jail Monday night. And I told them, I said, well, let Joel know, since I was here Thursday and Friday, I don't know if they let him know. I was here Thursday and Friday, I said, I'm here all night tonight looks like. So he could come in, he could come in, spoke to me anytime then. As far as, I spoke to Joel twice since all this happened. As far as a beating, three times, him, him when he come to the house and informed me my son was dead. Now, I ain't been out to speak to him, I don't really care to speak to him, you know, since I've been locked up, I ain't got nothing to say. But I, I, I do, I do enjoy going over the evidence and trying to find, find answers. Because when I find answers, it helps me a little bit, help to go, I pull myself away from this. And imagine just looking at your son on slabbing pictures, you know, trying to think of something, something gotta give, something gotta give, and all of a sudden you'll get a call, something happen, and, and a window open up, and it helps, it does help. But it don't, I ain't even started grieving yet. And, and when this investigation's over, that's when I start grieving, hopefully. Hopefully, we'll get justice, and who knows when that'll be, but I know stuff don't happen overnight. And I, I ain't asking for nothing to happen overnight, I just, I'm wanting something to happen. You know, it's just like, if any one of our children was in the same, if they had oxygen out of their breath, they should've been locked up that night, in my opinion, that's my opinion.
It's a threat to public safety, you know, when we have murders that are just out there walking free, when they're bragging on Snapchat about what they're doing, and then just getting away with it, you know, I mean, this is
Under influence is under influence, right? You could have a, a beer can under, and be, get a ticket for under influence. And when you run over somebody and you're under influence, yeah, I don't care if it's thirty days as long you've been home, if it's a misdemeanor, that's what, you know, Joel told me. I mean, for God's sake, these are young girls, and if they got something to tell, if they was put in jail, they might've opened up. They might've got scared enough they would've said something. And like I told Shannon, I said, you twenty-five, I mean, you twenty-one. My, I thought she just turned twenty-two, I'm gonna say. I said, you got a lot, you got a lot of lot to deal. I said, I hate to see you spend twenty-five years in jail, I really do, and I, I do, I ain't got nothing against these girls.
But the route that they drove that night was not even straight to the hospital, they took an extra, I mean, by the end of it, it was what, forty-five minutes or?
They took twenty-five minutes to decide what they wanted to do, and by then, my son was more likely dead. I mean, uh
That alone.
Fourteen minutes, fourteen mile drive from where they was, they turned around and went to go see daddy, went to go see sister first, then went to go see daddy, get somebody hop in there too. Now, you got twenty-five minutes to kill the, the first person I'm seeing. Wasn't an E M P, it was just a regular person to try to do CPR on my son. And I know, I know he ain't took, he, he said, he seemed like he'd been dead an hour. Even though I know that ain't true, because I done done a timeline, I know, I know he couldn't have been dead an hour, because at nine fifty, people been on his way back. I got a timeline down to the T, but there, there's still stuff you don't know. You don't know, you know, that this gotta be in there, that he was actually killed between nine and fifty. It had to be between nine and fifty, and ten fifteen was some nine-one-one call, so if he was still breathing then, he was still alive, but I can't take their word for it, because Shannon's not alive three times. And three times, twice I've talked to her, she's alive, she's changed her story. And that's what I thought we was waiting on, her to change her story, and then she would be put in jail.
But the wrong, the wrong crime that's being listed, the wrong charge as an accident, that even keeps this family from victims' compensation at the attorney general's office. And so we need to correct that, especially going into this grand jury. I mean, we need, we need a change of venue, big time here, if Smith County can't actually investigate and properly present, you know, to the grand jury itself, I mean, this is, this is, this is problematic.
They, uh, somebody asked Samantha, that's the one that was driving the sister. Somebody, I mean, she, she plainly stated that she asked the cops what to charge us with. I got, I got it documented too. And she said the cops helped her, helped her find something to charge us with. That's where the stalking come in. You know, you can go out, trespass is a ticket, right? And if they, they charge you with stalking, they don't pick you up, put you in jail. And I got enough common sense, I knew that when I seen the papers, Chris showed me the papers, I said, who signed? And he said Samantha. I said, uh. And he says stalking too, I said, that's why you carry me in. I never stalked nobody in my life, I ain't got no reason to stalk them. And even what, what she says down there, like I ain't adjudicating anything, what she said down there, I come and took pictures of her house. Like I told y'all, it was night time, you can't even see her double-wide trailer. I, I know what a double-wide trailer looks like, because I went on Google. You know, y'all all familiar with Google, if y'all wanna go somewhere, I'll zoom down and look at it from there. You know, I wanted to know where that first car would come in that night and come across the scanner. That's when I was down there, because it come across the scanner, they was looking for my son in the ditch. I was taking pictures of the black marks right there where the ditch was. Now, you got a ditch, large alone, you got three addresses. Her address is one, David Phillips is the other. You got one in between, Holly, Holly's kin to them, they got a gentleman that was with me that night, he was speaking to her. Like I said, I ain't adjudicating this, I ain't bringing it out, because I still gotta go to court on this anyway, but anyway, uh, that's when I was down there. The sheriff, you know, the investigators told me, uh, that, uh, wasn't no call, twice they told me it wasn't. And Joel told me it was. After I told him, I said, I keep this, people keep telling me the same thing, that it come over the scanner that night. And, and the person that's holding it says, they got proof, they got it recorded, and he told me, yeah, yeah, well, early on, we did get a call. But that, now, that's when I went down there, yeah, to take pictures of the black mark in the road. Like I said, I never stepped off the pavement, and I'm fully aware, you know, the county's got a fifty-foot ride away from the center mark, but I ain't the county, but I never set foot off. We even went down the road to turn around, we didn't even turn in the driveway. I, I didn't break no laws, so I, I, like I told Ms. Goodson, I ain't worried about me, I ain't worried about me, I wanna know what happened to my son. But I, it's just a, it's just a slap in the face that I would, even had to go to jail, I mean, it's just ridiculous. I mean, it's, I talked to a lot of people when I was in there, and I found out more in there than I did outside, but it's, it's ridiculous, and I, I thank y'all again, I'm just bringing awareness, I, I just don't want my son's case to be squandered. I, I, I think a lot of the, it could've been handled a lot better. Now, I ain't saying Joel won't end up making a good one before it's over with, but he might've shown me a lot more what he showed me, that's just my honest opinion, you know, and everybody here's got one, you know, and I appreciate all y'all's time.
His son still does not have a headstone for his grave, is that something that we could request funds from the board of supervisors for a headstone?
I don't care about that, lucky, that's good. I'm not aware, I'm not aware of any funds that have been set aside for such, you can make a request in writing, and the board can take it up.
Okay. Okay, well, do you guys have anything more for us, or any, any direction?
But I'm certainly sorry for your loss.
Like, I appreciate, like I said, I'm, I'm here, I'm, I'm gonna speak any word that anybody here, here may speak. And I, I ain't got nothing else to do no more. I mean, it's consumed me, and it's time, like I told people, my wife gets on to him, because she, she can see what it totally takes, it takes the toll on all of us. I mean, it ain't just me, it's when Joel told me that night, the first thing that hit my mind, I won't never be the same, we won't never, me and my wife been married thirty-three years. Bubba, we call him Bubba, he was that thirty, December sixteenth. And I know he's a grown man, but he was my baby. Infant. And all these memories you got of your child when, when you lose them. I mean, it, it comes back tenfold, I mean, I can remember helping to walk, feeling the kid in my wife's belly for the first time, I mean, all these come rushing I mean, all these come rushing back. They ain't got nothing to do with the case at hand, though. But I'm, I'm telling you this, something gotta give. I mean, it ain't, it ain't being handled right and it's, it's, it's too, it's too important to. I, I, I don't, I don't want to see anybody go through this. I swear I don't. And nobody should have to, but life is hard and God puts on you what he thinks you can handle, I guess. And that's the way I gotta look at it. We're a Christian family and we don't, we lived here, we've been here since, this has been a Smith County. And my folks, my wife is from Alabama, but. We ain't done nothing but try to be good people. And I, I ain't, you know, I ain't trying to stir up no trouble. I'm just trying to look at stuff in, in a common sense way. And that's the way I was taught. That we can always, uh, try to plant roses on stuff, but it is what it is. And if we don't, we don't fix, you don't fix something that's broke, it gets worse, you know? And there's a lot of broken stuff around here far, far as our, I mean, we can't let them girls down there that, that done this. It's more their parents' fault than it is theirs. They, they addicted to meth. And I'll say it, because I know it's true, and I ain't trying to talk about nobody. They put their daughters out there. They put their daughters out there to protect themselves. And that's exactly what they done.
Like prostitution?
Exactly. It, exactly, that's exactly what, if you call it that, you know, no money, might not even switch hands. But you know, if you protecting yourself to keep yourself out of jail? And you, you use your young one to do that? What kind of person are you? You know, I'd die for my kid. I'd die for the ones I got left. You know, that's just the way I was raised. My parents were done the same for me. But you, you, they've got, you got people that, but the drug, the drug numbs you. I ain't gonna sit here and be a hypocrite, say I ain't never done it. Back in my young days, I've done, I've done almost everything. And I taught my kids, I said, look, you don't, don't fool around there. It, it'll take everything you love from you. It'll take everything. And it, it took, it took a lot of my treasure from me. My son was a good child. I mean, he's good, he's a good adult. He's a hard worker. And y'all ever went in Walmart or Fox, y'all probably seen her. He worked there for over eight years. I mean, he didn't mind working. I mean, he didn't. He wa, he didn't hit on women. I raised him, he seen me, how I treated my wife. He's married for thirteen years. And at one point, I was afraid of that they gonna try to make him look bad before, when he's in the ground. I said, but his ex-wife testified, she used to jump on him and, and beat him down, you know, scratch him and stuff, she was a little bit, but. She what you call fly hot? See, I fly hot on somebody, that's her, her turn. Now, he, he would just hold her off and he'd be all scratched, he never laid his hand on her. And if she ever says anything different, she's alive. Of course. I got document, documentation that she's already said he never laid a hand on her. But I'm just, uh, like I said before, I'm trying to bring awareness and, uh, I don't wanna take up all y'all's time. But I, I do appreciate every, every bit of the attention y'all showed us here today.